Hey, thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order the August 11, 2022, special public meeting on the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone to please silence cell phones and electronic devices. Treasurer Wagner, please call the roll.
Present.
Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Ms. Murawski?
Here.
Ms. Warrenburg?
Here.
President Lindy?
All right.
Thank you.
Watching.
Thank you. So just to kind of get a setup, and I don't know how many people are on our virtual.
Rob could tell you.
But this is kind of, this is kind of an unusual meeting. Let's, let's, you know, and I think we all agree, and it's quite interesting. And I see Mr. Lindy is also with us virtually. It's quite odd because every board member except Brandon is here. So it's almost like a full committee meeting. And, you know, Dr. Moffett decided to join us to be a part of the conversation. So my, my thinking about why this meeting is unusual, and I just wanted to give a brief overview of my understanding of the assignment. And I think that Mr. Lindy can certainly add to that and any other board member who has a thought and idea about that. But as, as everybody knows, we've been engaged with Council Gray City Schools on board governance training. And we've had at least one full day session with them. And if you recall at that full day session, we began to talk a little bit about what the board's role is, overarching role, that being student outcomes. And they talked a lot about student outcomes. And we had a pretty robust discussion that day about student outcomes. Out of that discussion came another discussion about how our committees are structured in the work of the board. And there were lots of ideas and thoughts and opinions about what our board structure is currently, what it could potentially look like. But most of all, how best can we impact the work or influence the work that we do? And I believe that since that, after that time, we may have had one or two conversations in the full board session in our business meeting where we talked about this. So out of this session, the board agreed that we will come together with all of the committee chairs. And this assignment, I'm looking at Mr. Lindy on, on the screen because he actually made that assignment to bring together the four chairs of each of the board committees with our superintendent to really begin to talk about what our committee structure looks like or could look like. And the assignment was to make recommendations for any changes that we might have or any thoughts or whatever, whatever recommendations we, we might have about that. So that's just kind of a general overview. And Ben, do you have any thoughts or want to add anything to that?
No, not at all. Thanks, Carolyn.
Okay. Does anybody else want to add anything to that? Anything different or anything? Okay.
We asked them for comments.
On what you said. Well, I, comment about the assignment itself. Like if you need clarity, if you want to, if there's something else you want to add in terms of how you see the assignment, then yes.
I just wanted to, I think that that should.
Can you talk to me?
I think that that, and I said this before, I think that the conversation should have been a full board conversation. I think we don't just have the superintendent of the board here. We have the treasurer here, we have the attorney here. I think that that should have been a, a, a public conversation either in Cal or in, with, with the entire board because the magnitude of that impacts everything.
Okay.
So that's just, I wanted it to be publicly noticed.
Okay. And that's fine. And I just, just to comment on that, I think I, I hear you. And I think, I think the, the, what has happened is that we've had time and I think people have had opportunity to think more about it. And I do expect in today's meeting that we're going to have lots of things to talk about. And, and that's okay. But at that particular time, everybody was in agreement to do it. So that's why we continue to do it. But your point is well taken.
I don't think I understood it. To be honest with you, I, I would have expressed concern at that time had I known that it was going to be this. I was really thinking that it would be much like what President Lindy already does and that I'm just kind of surveying the boards, the, the committee chairs, getting an opinion, not really a formalized, hey, we're going to make a recommendation to the entire board.
Yeah, I got you.
I would have expressed concern then because I think that it's too important.
I believe it was a form, and I'd have to refer to the notes, but I think it was a formal assignment by President Lindy for this committee. And he even assigned me the responsibility for facilitating it. So that's how that happened. But like I said, I think we've all been thinking about it and lots, I think we're going to have a good discussion to that. Mary?
And just to add in, I do think that we are going to have a very good discussion just to be able to kind of voice not only our concerns, but to kind of decide on, well, not even really deciding, but to figure out where our next steps are going to be. You know, from my opinion, I personally think that all four of our committees are very, very important. The major goal for me is making sure that we're being efficient, making sure that we're using our time wisely. And having this meeting today, I think we're going to get a lot of things out of it and be able to have some steps moving forward to, of course, bring back to the full board.
Okay. And thank you for your comments. And we're, we're going to have a pretty robust conversation today. And it will include any recommendations for next steps. I will say that I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate that this is a longstanding task for us. I think we can make recommendations to the full board in one or two meetings at the most. And so as we start to lay out our next steps, as long as we are clear about what those next steps are, we move forward. You know, we can make decisions, can make decisions today. We can make recommendations today.
Right.
Okay. So I saw Eve, I believe your hand was up and then Mike's.
Yeah, I would just add to it, this, it does date back to the in-service or that retreat that we had where we wanted to talk more about our organization and, and dealing with efficiencies and doing the work. I would also say that I think it is, we will be able to make recommendations in a relatively short period of time. But whatever we do, it will require that we, possibly, it will require us reviewing and rewriting some portions of the bylaws and passing those. And also not only what to do, but when should it start? Because the reality is we're set by board action for, you know, to be what we're doing now, at least until the end of December, which is how, but that doesn't, that's not written in stone, even though it's been passed by the boards. If we can make a better use of our time or organize ourselves in some other way in the meantime, sure. But I think it's a when, and then also just technically we'd have, it might require a review of the, of the bylaws and changing some portions of it, especially as it pertains to committee jurisdiction and what have you.
And I think it's also on the agenda because you added it to the agenda. So we could talk a little bit about that as well. Mike?
Thank you. I didn't have any comments, but now I do. So I was under, I think we're all kind of on the same page. I assumed this would be like one meeting and we would have.
That would be, that would be ideal.
No, and, and to Dr. Moffett's point, I think too, and I think, I think we all do. I shouldn't say stuff like that, but that this is a full board discussion. I see this as like an ad hoc committee that has one meeting, as opposed to an ad hoc committee that has a year and a half or whatever we decide on the other one. We make a recommendation, we all talk about it. And it's clear that policy has to stick around because we'll need to rewrite bylaws so we can take policy off the table and I'll see you guys later. I'm just kidding. I was a good actor in high school.
I knew he wasn't going.
Mary would have.
Mary's on the door.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Lind, well, I already asked Ben, Superintendent, did you have a comment or anything about that?
I don't, I just was concurring.
Okay.
The way that I understood it was this was coming together to actually make a recommendation, make a suggestion and a recommendation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. Great. Okay. So if we move on to the agenda, I invited Daniel to come to give us an overview of kind of any legal requirements or expectations as it relates to Ohio Revised Codes and, and/or our bylaws about how boards form committees, how committees function, that kind of thing. But anything that would be helpful to help us move forward with any recommendations.
Thanks. And I'm glad to, again, answer any questions as they come up through, through the meeting. Just in general, there's not a lot in the Ohio Revised Code that relates to board committees. The one thing I mentioned to Board Member Jones is that the Ohio Open Meetings Act applies to committees equal, of the board equally as it would to the full board. So meetings have to be noticed, meetings have to be in public. This meeting was noticed, this meeting is in public. All the committee meetings are noticed, all the committee meetings are in public. There has to be an in-person quorum for committee meetings in the same way that there has to be an in-person quorum for full board meetings only. So that's sort of the, the revised code. There's not a lot else that relates. And, and I don't know what a lot of other school districts do, but I think we use committees probably more than most school districts do in terms of our sort of board's organizational structure. Which leads me to the bylaws, which is that there's a real encouragement in the bylaws for the board to refer matters to committees. So just reading from 0150, which is the organization bylaw, you know, when it's describing committees, when the bylaw describes committees, it says, "The board authorizes the establishment of standing committees and ad hoc committees whose members shall be appointed from its membership. Each committee is charged with executing a work plan and investigating, researching and discussing any matters referred by the board and making a report or recommendation to the full board." In bold kind of highlighted type, it says, "In an effort to increase deliberation and build consensus, substantive matters requiring board action will be referred to a committee of the board whenever possible." Goes on to emphasize at multiple places within our bylaws that a committee appointed pursuant to this policy shall not take action on behalf of the board under any circumstances. That's reiterated also under 0122.2, which says, "Board members have authority only when acting as a board legally in session. The board shall not be bound in any way by a statement, action, or, or action on the part of any committee or any individual board member, except when such statement or action is in pursuance of specific instructions by a majority of the board." There, there's some other sort of technical bylaws that relate to committees. For example, a chair, no one board member shall chair more than one standing committee. There's some references to how committee reports are to be written, especially including that minority opinions within the committee shall also be reflected in the minutes. Again, glad, glad to answer any questions, but that's sort of an overview of, I, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted me to emphasize, but that, that's sort of an overview of the board's bylaws with respect to committees.
Okay. And we may get more into some of the conversation about the current policies and bylaws in, in item C. I, I kind of lost my train of thought around this. I, I did take the opportunity to go through, I just kind of skimmed through the, this particular set of bylaws in, in there, just to refresh, you know, it's always good to refresh. And I am one person who, ever since I've been on this board, and maybe Eve is the only person who may know about that. But you know, I've always questioned bylaw in terms of how they're written, what it means to us and that kind of thing. And, and I think it depends on, on each of us in terms of where we stand, how we interpret things. So I do hope that in addition to make, making recommendations around what our board structure should, could or should look like, that we also talk about how we might make our board processes, our committee processes much more efficient and how, in terms of how we use our committees, if in fact we decide to go that way. So having said that, I, I wanted to, we, we could either do one of two things. We could either, Ms. Bolton was the one who asked that we take a look at the, the current policy. So I wanted to give her the opportunity to do that. But we could just really open it up for discussion. I think it's pretty, we're at that point where I think people have made some decisions for themselves about how they see things. So, you know, we don't need to carry on, we can just make some quick decisions. Go ahead.
I was just going to add to what Dan mentioned from the OSBA, the, over the 600 and some school districts, the vast majority of them, of the boards have committees, but not all of them. There are many that do not. And according to OSBA, the typical committees are curriculum and instruction, negotiations, finance, policy, facilities, grounds and transportation. Does that sound familiar? And then ad hoc committees usually are about redistricting, new building and strategic planning. So I think we fit within that mainstream of, of what is the norm, if anything in school board policy and governance is the norm anymore, that I think that we're well within our way. I would also say, as I said, we, about the bylaws, we have to make some adjustments. But it's also good timing because part of all, everybody's work plan is also left over from the strategic goals, the strategic plan goals. And, and those are specifically cited. And since that strategic plan is over, it, this is a good time for us to kind of figure that out as well. We don't have a new strategic plan yet and we, we will. But I do think there's some value in this particular timing, as well as with the new administration and, and the other things we're engaged to do. So I think it's good timing and, and there's, there are next, a lot of other next steps, but I don't think any of those next steps should impede us from making some decisions today if possible.
I agree.
So I think that would work for, for all of us. But I, I'm, I'm glad that we're, so many of us are here and I'm glad that this has been convened.
Yes. Okay. Anybody have any other questions or comments just about the board policies and bylaws and Daniel's presentation? Okay. All right. So if we move on to open discussion recommendations, this is the opportunity for us to really kind of hash through some of what people are thinking, any thoughts and recommendations that people, or opinions that people have. And I know we, we are seven people who are all very opinionated. So I'm sure that we'll get at least one or two, maybe three, four, five opinions. So why don't we just open it up and let's hear, for open discussion and hear what people are thinking, thoughts about what our committee's structure could look like. And both Superintendent Wright and our treasurer, if you have any thoughts about that, please feel free to add to that conversation. So who wants to, Mike, go ahead.
So I thought a lot about this and I, I don't, I'm open to anything, honestly, everybody's opinion on anything. Keep all the committees, add 10 more committees, get rid of them all. Like, sure, like I'm, I'm willing to be convinced one way or the other. The only thing I feel pretty strongly about right out of the starting gate, and I actually want to have a question for you, Dan, if that's right, or Eve, quite frankly, I think you might have some background on this too, either one, is that policy and finance have to stick around. And that's not because I love chairing a committee. I do enjoy it and I think it's a great honor. It is, it is. But that's, has nothing to do with obviously that, I hope you know that. But my question then becomes, finance, I have no questions about. I think that committee stays. My question for either one of you or anybody really, you all might know, is how do, so Eve, the list that Eve read did not say policy. And so I'm curious, like considering we are like part of governing is, at least in my brain, so policy centric. And I think we do a lot of really good stuff in policy and especially the past few years. Because you have had a really great chair the past few years. I can tell you, he is, he is excellent.
If I didn't say it, it is, I said.
There is one?
Yes.
Oh, you did say pop. All right, cool. I missed that. Good. Okay. Then never mind. My question, because my question was going to be then, well, how do these boards do that then if they, okay. And I don't.
And if I might add, and you know, when I make my formal comments, I, I just, but I wanted to add, even in that initial meeting, that session, that's what we said.
Right. No, and yeah.
Changed the structure.
Yeah.
What would we leave? And we said, it made sense just based on what we believe our role to be. Governance, governance, governance and policy. But we said the particular committees would be policy and finance.
Yeah, totally. And I.
And that's just to add to.
Yeah. And it hasn't really changed since then. Like I said, with the other committees, health and wellness, student achievement. I mean, I don't have any super strong.
And we, and I think people do have some.
Okay, cool.
Comments about that. So, okay. Thanks.
I can just repeat what I said earlier. So in terms of all of the four committees, I think my big thing is how can we work on all of them effectively in making sure that we are doing what we need to do in terms of student outcomes? So if I had a vote today, I would say, before I said that, oh, I'll give up health and safety. But then I kind of thought long and hard about it. And I said, you know what? Health and safety is very important. It's very important in our schools. And when I looked at kind of the responsibilities in our bylaws of health and safety in the committee, I just want to make sure that there, that we understand our role in the committees and what we're supposed to do. I do think that they should all stick around.
All the community this year?
For the future, yes. But would I be open? Maybe. That's just my two cents.
So you're saying to better understand the role of the committees and the chairs?
I would say both, yes. Because coming into the health and safety role, I just want to make sure that if I'm doing something, that I'm doing it correctly and I'm doing the job that I'm supposed to be doing. And really making sure that for the student outcomes that we're hitting that. And I feel like sometimes we're not necessarily doing that. And as you stated before, in terms of there are seven of us and how we interpret, how we interpret the bylaws and the policies, I could read one thing and say, oh, well, Carolyn, I think this is what it says. But you could say, Mary, no, that's not what I think it says. And then Eve could say, well, no, this is what, I want to make sure that we have a true understanding of what we're supposed to do.
Okay. Go ahead, Eve.
I, knowing the shift that's occurred with the new administration and where we are in governance, the learning, no, whatever. I did like the suggestion that was made in full board meeting that the superintendent made. And I think maybe Carolyn, you may have been spoken with the superintendent on that one too. Since our focus is the student outcome piece, that it, it would seem that our already existing committee of the whole should probably best serve the student outcome, student instruction, student achievement role. Because all seven of us are there, it happens on a monthly basis. And, and it's a, you know, it's that four o'clock time too, that is best for invariably administration when they do it. It's not just the superintendent reporting, but usually it goes deeper into the, into the administration reporting. So I think, and I don't know that we could get it to where you keep it at 90, but certainly not any more than two hours if it's one of these big things. But I, I do like that idea because I think then you're not putting so much pressure on just the, the student, student achievement committee. But that way the whole board is getting what is primary job one. So I think that makes sense. And, and, and I don't know about the health and safety thing. I think, I, I think that committee probably should stay, but I would really think that.
We can make some changes.
We can make some changes as to what's going on because it, it is a focus for everybody, especially post-COVID. And the safety piece, I think safety can be absorbed in there a little bit better. But, well, not better, but as an addition. So, and I also think we ought to remove our reports from the lobbyists, from committee work and public work. I think they already report to the administration and that's the administration's job to deal with the lobbyists.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Sorry, Ryan Messer and Melanie Bates, wherever you are.
Yes. Okay. I, I see you. Ben and Kareem, I didn't know if you wanted to add to that or you pretty much.
Committee, we, I think I've been speaking to former board members, I think I shared this with you all, and asked about, you know, hey, how do we get to where we are? I'm pretty big on that. And I do agree that the strategic plan is, and how we've done it as a board ties to the community very, very succinctly. And I think that we need to hear, I think some of our committee structures should be based on what the community is saying is important to them. And so right now, health and safety is very important to the community. Because we are still, I don't care what, what we want to think, we are still in COVID and now monkeypox is an issue. And safety is an issue for our community as well, hence a successful town hall meeting regarding safety, school safety. So I think that with some restructuring regarding safety, health and safety, we should be more efficient for sure. I do have concerns about disbanding committees that we promised the community would be there for this year. We have partners that know and understand along with community members that most of the work in our board is done in committees. And so they watch our committee meetings, they watch committee meetings for information. Business meetings, if we go back to the point, are supposed to be where you report out, not where work is really being done. Work should be done in committees. And so that's how it has been historically. So I just think that we need to take some time and really get to what is important to the community. We're already doing that work. I do think we need to be more efficient with time. We've got, we've got a whole month of meetings, many of them are unpaid. And so, you know, that, when you talk to other board and board members across the nation, they don't do it this way. And so I think we can be more efficient for sure. And I like the student achievement information being at the Cal as long as, I think that, let me just be succinct. The board's role is policy, finance and holding the administration accountable for student achievement. I don't want us to lose sight of the connectivity to the administration by getting rid of a student achievement committee. That should be, that is important to me. I think that we need to ask those overarching questions to the administration. For instance, what was shared, the board asked a question about AP courses to find out from administration that only three of our schools at that time had AP courses. Those are overarching questions that the board should hold the administration accountable to regarding student achievement. Everything we do is to the end of moving achievement. And so I think we need to have some semblance of accountability with regard to.
Thank you. Superintendent?
So several, several thoughts. I think one is, I do think that as a board and CEO team in thinking about governance, that we do want to have some additional conversation around what truly is board work and what is administration, what is administrative work? So for example, if we use as an example, the safety town hall for, for example, that was not a request that was done at the board level. That was not something that the board said that you need to do this or we're holding the administration accountable for doing this. That was because of the consistent conversations that we have, because of, as the leader of the organization, understanding where we are with safety and the tenor that's happening in the community, it was something that was important. So while it was not something that was requested, it was something that was important. And I think we all celebrate the fact that it was done at a level that we as an organization and as a team can feel good about. I use that as an example because when we think about if we're, if we're maintaining all of the committees, and I actually, I think I said it earlier and I still feel the same way in terms of support for the maintaining a policy committee for obvious reasons and maintaining a finance committee for obvious reasons. But I do believe that the work that is happening in the other committees, I do believe that that is work that could happen in the work that we do through Cal and having those discussions through that. Because it's still the same information and the same level of focus. So other thing that I, I would like to discuss, and maybe, I don't know if this is the time for us to discuss it, but you know, when we think about the, the structure of the committees and the request again for the agenda, the time for staff for the agenda, the presentations that are then made in the committee sessions, that really is that the space for that presentation? Or is that again, administration work? And I, I don't know that we're at a consensus on that. As a matter of fact, I'm sure that we're not at a consensus on that. Because if so, we would be looking more toward how we are reducing some of those activities. we would, um, be looking more toward how we are reducing some of those activities. We, to, to Dr. Moffett's point, uh, we spend a lot of time, um, either in a meeting or preparing to go into a meeting. And the only thing that, that I would like to just make sure that we move forward, whether it's me, or whether it's somebody on the team, if we truly move toward the student outcomes, then the time, you want our maximum amount of time spent doing the work that's going to lead to student outcome. And so that's just, that's just my, my feedback on what, what I'm hearing, um, and the way that that's happening. But I do really think that we would want to come to consensus at some point on the difference in committee work or board work and superintendent work. Because in some of the committees, I think that there is, um, there is an overlap of what's happening there.
Yeah.
Can I get in for a sec when you're ready?
I, I can't hear you, Ben. You're muted.
Uh, I unmuted this time. Can you hear me okay?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I was gonna, many, many of my comments are pretty in line with what I think you were saying, um, Vice President Jones, and what I heard the, um, uh, superintendent say, and, and from others as well. Um, the, the, there are only, I think, two, I think like Mike, I'm open to a lot of different places this might land, that I would, I would support whenever a recommendation does come to the full board. But the two things that I'm trying to watch pretty carefully are first, whether there's a student achievement committee or not, I feel very strongly that the whole board needs to be involved in evaluating the superintendent for student learning. So I like, I, I want to, I want to advocate against a world where a sub, or a committee does that evaluation, and then presents it to the board. I think our whole board should be holding the superintendent accountable for student learning. Um, so I think the idea of putting student achievement in Cal, because it's everybody, for me, that, that, that sounds like a great idea, but it, it's not the only way to do it. I think just as long as all of us are holding the superintendent accountable for student learning, it's a win for me. And then the other is, I think this was what the superintendent was saying, just the opportunity cost of how many meetings we have. It's a lot of preparation time, it's a lot of time in meetings, it's a lot of follow-up for meetings. And that's true both for the administration and for board members. You know, people have jobs, people have families, none of us are paid very much. Um, and I, I think for all of those reasons, um, a recommendation that would have fewer committee meetings um, is one that, one that I would support too. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I, I'd like to offer my opinion, thoughts, recommendations, or whatever, um, to the conversation. Um, first of all, I, when we, when this first came up in the Saturday session, uh, and I heard the superintendent express her opinion about the committee structure, it resonated with me at that point. And I think it resonated with me because I have always had a question about how we define our work. And I have heard it said, in the seven years that I've been here, I've heard it said, we are working board. I have a totally different philosophy about what that means, whether it's a working board or whatever. I strongly believe that our role is governance and policy, period. And I do believe that we have to hold the superintendent accountable. To me, that's part of our role as governance, is to hold the superintendent accountable. So it's not separate. And I do agree, we all have to do it. I think, um, I, I, from what I'm hearing people say, people are saying a couple of different things. One is, you know, we could change the structure. And I hear Mary saying very clearly, efficiency is important. And it's important to me too. Part of that too, I think, when we talk about changing policy and stuff, uh, things, I can remember being a new board member. It has taken me, now, mind you, I took the presidency for quite a few years, so it took me out of the loop of having the opportunity to work on some of the committees. But I think it's important, i- if we're talking about changes, that every board member, when they come on new, that every board member has a chance to serve a tenure on every single committee. Because one of the inefficiencies that I experience right now, now being as the Chair of Student Achievement, is that I don't know the historical context in terms of how that committee operates. And so it's been hard for me to function in that role because I don't know much about it. So I've had to rely on the history. And the history was, they give all these updates and this and that, you know. So it's been, it's been tough. So I do agree with folks, as, as we're talking about being more efficient in that. Um, I agree that we have to better define what board work in administration, and I think that's a full board, uh, full board aligned with the superintendent in working on that. And I think that that's part, that's also part of accountability in terms of our role as governance. Um, I, I might have a difference of opinion about how I see health and safety. Um, I think I still hold with the fact that that is full board conversation. I don't, at, um, I, I think I agree with Kareem that for the year, it may make sense to continue it through the year. I see it as full board work. And I think what I experienced, and I've had, I've had a brief conversation with Mary about it. What I see is that in, in, in many ways, we share some of the same, uh, kinds of concerns of student achievement. Because a lot of times, we spend our work on updates, getting information and updates. Well, that's stuff that the administration needs to be given us. The piece that's missing though, for me, in all of the committees, if we change the structure, is community engagement is important to our work. And I agree kind of with the philosophy that, uh, we're accountable to the community differently than what the superintendent is, because they elect us, and we have to be accountable to them. And if we move the committees, what does that do to our ability to hear them? My thought would be do something totally out of the box. Like, it wouldn't be unreasonable for the board to do community forums every quarter, or, or something like that, where we as the board are planning it, and, you know, that way we can get their feedback. So my suggestion will be if we change committee structures, which I am supporting, student achievements, student outcomes, be put solely on, uh, committee of the whole with, uh, uh, the superintendent and administration sort of overseeing that and pushing it forward. I would, I would like to see us also not have health and safety, because I think that's a bigger issue. I think that's a bigger subject, but I'm going to go with whatever the board decides on that. I agree with Eve that the, not that the information that our government liaisons give us is not important, but I think we can get it in a different.
Thank you.
I just think we can get that in a different way. You meet with them, right? But it's just, it, it just always seemed a little out of place to me.
Totally.
The other thing that I wanted to say, then I'll be quiet. Um, one of the things, hey, I gotta have my time. I get my time.
And you get to keep your own time. So that's the difference in the center chair.
The, um, the other thing too is, one of the concerns that I know that the community may have is, they have historically, when, when, when programs want funding, or they want something changed, or whatever, they have typically come to the board first. And I just, I don't agree with that. I agree that we should listen to them. But I don't think the community, I don't think the, the committee setting is where they need to come with a request for funding. I, I just don't believe that. But I also am not clear what their process is.
And I think that's the problem is that they've never been clear either.
Yeah.
Treasure, treasure has an answer for that one.
Okay.
Love the fact that many times I've caught off guard after the fact. So I don't.
Hey, Rob, Jen's sound is cutting in and out. I'm not sure if her mic's on.
All right, want me to get closer? Okay, is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
Um, if there's some kind of process where the, the financial impact stuff could happen in our committee or at the Cal level, so that it, as we're having those conversations about, I, I've been caught a couple of times where something got approved at SAC or something, and I knew nothing about it, there was no funding set up, and, but the administrator said, well, the, the committee approved it, the board approved it, it was moved forward. And so it makes it really hard. So I don't know if there's some process we can come up with to kind of improve that.
Yeah, and I think that's what Daniel was speaking to, to some extent. Um, you all, my brain is short today, but I think what I heard him say is, I think you're right. It had to do with actions and recommendations. My opinion, I never thought that the board should take an action. And it has always been assumed that if the board, if the committee, I'm sorry, if the committee takes an action, that it automatically approves whatever it is. And, and that's a problem.
Well, it gets, as a person who reads, it gets sent to the main board, and then things get approved there in collaboration, instead of, and it, it doesn't.
It doesn't. Yes.
It's not necessary fitting into the plan of the administration. Like, I, things have happened in prior administration where something, an administrator went to a committee, got something approved, the superintendent was not in supportive of it. Um, and then it became a financial, a huge financial challenge.
Yeah, okay.
There's a couple of things for the one person that's watching this. Um, two. Improved it by a hundred percent. Uh, people might be confused about committee versus full board. Even finance or policy, which would still be standing committees, we cannot make decisions. Committees can't act.
But it.
No, but, but I'm going to argue with that. They, uh, I'm going to argue with that. And I don't want us to go back to the same thing about actions and recommendations or whatever. What people do in committee comes to the full board. The full board decides or doesn't decide. And I've been, and many times when uh, it, it's decided against what the committee, and we've lived through that, because I think particularly Carolyn likes to make sure we're reined in a bit, and we're taking on more responsibility, that's fine. There is a rule that can be, uh, used regarding committee, and it's, I'm just making it up right now, is that do not entertain vendors.
Yeah.
Do not entertain vendors in committees. Because I'll give you a great example, when the activist folks came and gave their 30-minute presentation. With them, there was also somebody that wanted a contract.
Right.
So the first thing is, and, and, and this hurts to, because people have relationships and stuff, but just don't, don't entertain any vendors. Entertain only members of the community that have something to tell you or think about, or what have you. But that's the first thing, and I, because I think that, that sets you up for a, a problem. But I don't want the community, all two of them, to think that, um, the whole board is not taking action on these things, that you don't, and, and I think that's important. And that's, that's just where I would leave that.
Okay, Superintendent.
Thank you. Um, and to Jen's point, I think it all came full circle in that conversation, from, from what, um, both Ms. Wagner said and, um, Ms. Bolton. So to the question about, um, requests or financing, I do think it goes back to, again, board work versus superintendent work. So if the board is charged with, or has charged me after we determine what our goals are, what the guardrails are, what our areas of focus are, we know what the values are, then we then have to work through the process to get to who does what. What, so whether that's vendors, whether that's RFP, whatever that process is. And, and so much that, that, that we are working through right now, and coming together in terms of alignment, is going the other way. And whether that is from a vendor standpoint, or even, um, from recommendations for, you know, people that want to provide additional service to the organization. We have so many people, and a lot of people want to do great stuff for the organization. We have so many, so much of that right now, that one of the things that would be beneficial, if, if, if given the opportunity to do that, and my response to many of them has been, give us just a minute. Let us review where we currently are, so that we see where the gaps are, so that when we, when we're then moving to the next step, we're doing that. Not just because someone has this great initiative that they want to bring to us, but it's because it's something that's necessary for where we're looking to go next overall in, in terms of strategy. So that would just be, just to kind of punctuate tho- both of those, if it was a matter of, and, 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 and to Dr. Moffett's point, it's, this is not, this is not new. Like, this is not something that just started, it didn't just start with, with this board. She's done some, you know, some historical perspective on how we get there. So this has been the way, maybe that things have happened for a period of time. But we are collectively embracing the fact that we're in a new day. And so I think it's great that we're having the conversation right now, because it will give all of us clarity around what it is that we're doing moving forward. And honestly, take some things off of your plate right now, that you have actually hired me to do. You know, so if you're, you know, it's, it's great to have all of these people that want to do wonderful things for us, and that's great. But you hired me to do a job. And in terms of doing that, then, and giving me the latitude to get that done, and I am not afraid of accountability. I'm not afraid of being held accountable. But I do need to have the leeway to be able to do some of that. Um, and do that moving forward, so that we get to those outcomes that we actually talked, we talk about often for kids. So I think, I think I'm.
Okay, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
Has a white socks hat on. The nerve to come to a Cincinnati school board meeting. Can't stand them. I've seen at least four games at their stadium. Rude people.
Go ahead, Mike. I love their stadium.
Anyway, um, so, I'm all rattled now. Anyway, no, um, uh, the, the greatest baseball player of all time played for them. The greatest athlete of all time, Bo Jackson. Sorry. Um, so, a number, a number of things, but I'm glad people actually got to talk, because what I, what I was going to start with, so I got a number of things. They may seem disconnected, because then my hand raised for Psalms. But it piggybacks off superintendent really well, I think. Um, so I'm not going to repeat anything you said, because to me, this discussion is part and parcel of the larger discussion. And already, just sitting here, I can tell you a number of things have come up that will provide great clarity for me. So just, you know, the five years that I've been on this board, I have never fully had an understanding, or maybe a good discussion, and Jen knows this, and superintendents before, uh, or Nana know this, of what you, what do you do when somebody comes, you just, you keep using this example with like a vendor that has seemingly great idea, with a lot of data that backs up. I, I've never known. So the fact we're talking about, that's one example of, I think, many that we can line those up, that here's what happens. And to your point, Superintendent, I, I don't need that job. I am not an expert on that stuff, and so take it off my plate. I, I would love to be able to say, that sounds awesome. Talk to this person. So, but I do think these are all very, very much related. And as we tease out this conversation, it'll play into all the other things, and we'll figure out how to move forward. Um, so I did want to, uh, add one piece to the lobbying discussion. So again, it's going to feel like I'm bouncing around, but. So I, someone made a comment that, uh, you know, the, the lobby, I think it was Eve, lobbyist's report, um, to the administration. I would only add, you know, sometimes that will be via a recommendation from us to do something in Columbus, which I've long maintained we don't do enough of, we're not active enough in Columbus, um, a lot of other districts. I feel like we're getting more active in Columbus, so just in the past couple of years. I think COVID kind of let it fire too. So anyway, that's the only thing I wanted to add there. Um, and next one, um, and I think everybody knows the history of this, and Eve kind of made her, uh, her side comment about sorry, Ryan and Melanie. But so, you know, health and safe, health and safety was student achievement.
I know.
Yeah.
You say hell.
Health and safety. Hell is safe, uh, until Eve and Ozzy and I got in trouble, um, one of the times you got in trouble. And so, uh, we split it up, and, you know, as I sit here, I think I align mostly with Carolyn on this one, as far as like, I think it would make sense to rope in that discussion into the Cal as well. Again, I'm fine at the end of the day, though, I'm not, these are not hills I'm dying on. So, um, but that kind of came up as we were talking. And then the last thing, uh, Dr. Moffett got me thinking. So when I got, you know, that, that comment of the work gets done in committee is, is just kind of how it's been. It's what I know I inherited. Um, but really, I mean, the work, the work I think should be done, and is done by the full board. And I, I know Carolyn and I, um, like with Carolyn and you, we have maybe a little disagreement in that, or a big disagreement in that about is work getting done in committee? I would contend, well, it has to go to the full, but I do see what you're saying, Karen. I, I have come to very much appreciate what you're saying. So I, I do get that. And so. And so I think what I'm trying to get to is, at the end of the day, if we can get to a point where the work is being done by the full board, there is an understanding. You know, as policy chair, I've only been on policy the past couple of years. So all this vendor kind of crap hasn't really been relevant to me too much, unless I'm emailing other people saying, hey, I have this person present to your committee. So I do think we need to figure that out. But I would just ask, I would just request, like, similar to how we make policy and policy committee and superintendent and her team make procedures, I need to set up procedures for me. And for these, if we are going to start, you know, doing less busy work in the committee, more of the work of the full board, you know, what is the process? Who does get? Because we are the arm of the community, and I don't want that to go away. And I've heard that said a bunch of different ways from here today, but I'll just say it that way. And so like, what is the way for somebody in the community that has no clue how to mess with us? And let's be real clear, too, we're not easy to mess with. And even if you do get a contract with us, maybe you rue the day you got it. Because once you get it, we're even harder sometimes. Or so. That, I hate to keep using that example, but I think it's relevant. And I do think a lot of that work has been done in committee, which has made it messy. And you heard from Jen or something. I mean, I can't imagine. And I've been a part of that, so you know, I apologize. I'm trying to figure it out, being better about it too, so that's all.
Okay. Hold on, Jen first and then Kareem.
If any vendor contacts you, send them to the superintendent.
Yes.
Because she will contact me if funding is an issue. Two, there's a page on the website that says, doing business with CPS.
Exactly.
And so you can refer them to them, but that's how you follow rules.
Okay. Okay, we got Kareem and Mary who want to comment, and then we're going to pull this together and scan. Okay, go ahead, Kareem.
So I, I really, really appreciate what you said because I think our accountability is to the community. Your accountability, and your accountability is to us. And so that is a little different. We're not, we're a team, but we're not a team because we have completely different people that we're accountable to. And so I want to make that just really, really clear. I don't think the process, I am a CPS vendor. My business was. I can't do any business with CPS anymore, but the process is not clear. I have been the person who has sent people to the superintendent previously before you and will continue to do that. It's not clear. And people, when they vote, with community members are like, well, look, I can get to you fast. You know, I can get to, I can get to Mike, because I see Mike at the club, but I, you know, I want to talk to him. That is, that is a process that we have to navigate, and that has nothing to do with you all. But what happens, I think, with any system is when a person feels like it's broken, then they go around. And they're like, okay, well, superintendent's office, procurement office is not responding to me. It's been a month because our system has been broken. And they're, they want attention, and so they come to us. They come to the path of least resistance. And so that has historically been, come to a committee meeting and present your idea on what you can offer. At some levels, I think it is definitely usurping, but I understand why people do what they do because our system is broken. So my comment is, I don't think this should be a rushed process because we want to get meetings off of our calendar. I think this needs to be a very well-thought-out planned process presented to the community as this is how we feel we can be more efficient. And when we take something off, meaning disbanding a committee or making sure that the vendors don't come to a committee, we have clearly identified a process and put that out there through marketing and PR and everything else on how you do that. I think that we would be doing a disarm this, this is a suggestion, take it as an action.
No, 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 no.
I just think we would be doing a disarm this to make things easier for us and not be accountable to the community.
Thank you. All I'm trying to do, I, I wanted you to express, but you know, we tend to get long-winded, and I'm just trying to.
She did not cut you off. And I'm just going to end with something that Carolyn said. I am all about thinking outside of the box. And I remember, you know, you always stating to be innovative and to think outside of the box. I really think that we should probably start doing some community forums and town halls. And I think that the community would really love and really engage in that. And so changing my mind now about this whole health and safety, as you call it, health safety. I would be open to that because I still want to make sure that we are representing and we are being held accountable to the community as well, and especially in the sense of health and safety.
Okay.
Last comment. Is a question for me?
It's a question collectively, because I, I think that's a great idea as well. And in terms of, and I guess my, my only question would be, when we think about it, and I know we've, we've talked about the term engagement and, you know, what that looks like. But is that something that we would do? Because as Dr. Moffett made it very clear, which we all know, we report to you, the seven of you, and you all report to the community. And I think that that's very clear. But in terms of doing that, would we ever partner on that? Or is that something separate?
Yes, we could partner. We could, we could do some things.
Because one of the reasons that I asked the question, a part of overall next steps, to continue the conversations, we've gotten really good feedback just from the availability. The safety session was, was great. And so continuing to do, you know, those kinds of, there are some sessions that I'm looking to do as well. So I think that, you know, if there was opportu, and, and I think you've also seen that what I'm doing, I try to invite, you know, the board to be a part of it. But on the other end, where it's the board's actual engagement, and maybe you're inviting me to come in. So whichever, because I, I would, and I get the point about the team or not, but it's a, it's a, it's a working space for me to think that we are operating as a team. However, you have to be responsive to your constituents. I don't have constituents. I have stakeholders. You actually have constituents, and I do understand that.
Yeah. Hold on, hold on. I am really trying to pull it because I, I think I'm hearing a lot of people sort of, we're sort of repeating some things. And I just want to make sure, I want, everybody should have a chance, including myself.
I'm timing you, and you're. So, but here's the thing, we are 94 days away from a levy. So right now, let's be real about how we're going to be using our public time. It's going to be providing the forums, providing our own individual appearances at community, whatever. So at least for this, this 100 days, for this next 100 days that, as you've just completed your first, the reality is, I think it's, makes sense for the board and the administration to partner in any kind of public thing that we do, because we, we don't, so that's that. And I do think the board has a big role in, in thinking in terms about the strategic plan. But what I want to emphasize now is, these next 90-some days, we're going to be out on the levy trail. And the treasurer and the superintendent need to appear together on many of those opportunities. So I, as we get to this longer planning about Carolyn's idea of more community forums, and indeed, that's been Kareem's big push too throughout with the finance, I, I do think we need to figure out that right now, the next, the next three months or the next 95 days, it's about a levy effort. And so, and if the period.
Okay, and can I ask a question? Because I've not heard any updates about the levy.
Yeah, I was just.
That's going to be my next question. I have not heard anything from a full board, from a full board perspective. I have not heard anything about where we are, and I'm just putting that out there. We don't have to talk about it.
No, let's not because we can't.
We did, we, we didn't have next step. Listen to what I'm saying.
Meetings got canceled.
Typically, once we decide, we vote and we decide, there's a committee that comes together and they keep us informed of where things are. It is that part of it that I'm not sure about. So, but anyway, I, I didn't, I just put that out there.
We don't have an issue number yet. We're waiting for the issue number. We have met a couple of times, but the last meeting got canceled because there were so many people on vacation. There weren't enough people.
Okay, okay.
We'll give you an update soon.
Okay, so here we go. So what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna, going to attempt to do, what I'm going to attempt to do, and I'm going to take all the time I need to do it because I want to make sure we got it right.
We know.
Is summarize, not in any order in particular, what I'm hearing because these are sort of recommendations that I'm hearing, right? Okay, so what I'm hearing is that people, for the most part, people are in favor of having the two standing committees be policy and finance, right?
Correct.
And what I'm not clear about is where people are in terms of the recommendation for health and safety.
Continue for the rest of the year.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking. Continue for the rest of the year with the lobbyists. Meeting with our superintendent.
No, no lobbyists, but to really go back for the remainder of the year and look at what the, what the, what the monthly, the work, the work plans. You know, I think it could be more efficient.
Yeah.
For the remainder of the year.
And, and that's the part I heard Mary say clearly is being sure what the role of that committee is.
Absolutely.
And so that, that's going to require, that's another step in the process because what I hear you saying is, you know, how does this work get done? Well, I mean, we have to make some assignments to policy. And in terms of processes, finance committee needs to be involved in the vendor situation and all that. So this committee isn't doing that work, but that work can be assigned out, just like with health and safety, same thing.
Right, and just as the chair, I would say definitely keeping it around until January. And then if that, if our vote is to not have it, I would be okay with that.
Of course, it'll be over by noon.
Okay, I got you.
I know. So I'm just saying. December 31st. Yes, so starting in January.
Yeah, I was saying.
Well, I mean, we can talk about that.
No, I don't think, I don't know. I'm more on the pull the Band-Aid off.
The board, the board's organizational structure begins January 1.
I would go into January.
So the question, yeah, so, yeah. Okay, so that's, so with the committees, that's what, and we talked about folding student achievement into the full. Cow. And I also heard us say, somebody suggests that we extend the cow meeting for a couple of hours.
We never heard that.
I mean, I mean, up to.
I thought I'd heard an hour and a half.
Did somebody say they want to make it shorter?
I have a question. And, but it was about something that you said. So in regards to student achievement, would the recommendation be to keep that also until January?
No.
That's what I'm trying, see, I wanted to make sure that I understood that. It was important.
I think there still needs to be, so we're talking about processes needing to be clarified. We're also talking about an ongoing work about, in discussion and making decisions about what constitutes board work and administration work. So that conversation is definitely a full board conversation, right? And probably to happen in executive session.
I think that's part of the great city schools dialogue.
Well, it is. It is, but to happen as just within our own.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
I think that happens publicly.
Yeah, I think it should happen.
Oh, yeah.
I think that whole conversation happens publicly.
Well, it will be.
Right?
It'll have to be more all gathered.
Yeah, in our, in our little Saturday session, not in exact.
Okay, that's fine.
Cool.
Yeah.
So I have a question before you say, you said stop student achievement immediately, and I have a slight problem with that because just like health and safety, we have put out a whole calendar for the year to the public. And so what you're saying is, okay, well, we're not going to have a, or, assuming a September meeting. Wouldn't it be more prudent to at least announce that to the public? But you're still only talking about two more meetings, two more meetings. I just think, I think with, there is, just like with health and safety, if you're going to do it for one committee, we could take all of these for the remainder of the year, which is only about four more meetings, and then announce to the public something different.
I, I think the board can consider that. I, I can tell you how I feel about that. I feel like this is much more of a pressing issue and that if we inform the public, and I, I could see us having one more meeting, but to inform the public about the transition that we're making and why, I think they would be okay in understanding.
I think they absolutely would too, but I didn't hear that in your, in your announcement.
Right, right, right. I said, well.
I didn't hear that either. That's why I, ooh, okay, I was surprised.
I agree.
But, but we are agreeing to inform the public that we are making this change.
Yes.
We're not waiting to make student achievement like we're waiting to do health and safety because it's a very different, that's a perpetual responsibility.
So, so can we put a date on that? So can we say, look at the calendar, to the public at the next board meeting, what we're going to say on Monday is that we are going to disband student achievement effective for the September meet or whatever the dates are, put it out there.
The board has a vote on this first.
So then, we're going to vote on this Monday or no?
Sure. We can.
We can never.
I mean, I'm asking, I'm asking. So are we voting on it? If we're not voting on it Monday, because it has to be typed up and processed, then that would be the, what, the next meeting? Let's just put some dates.
My, my, my concern, Monday. Because I'm just trying to tie this meeting to what might have to happen on Monday. And I don't think it's enough time for Phyllis, for you all to get.
Do you think you can get it?
Okay.
Well, it doesn't have to be rushed. When's the next cow?
We don't, do we, we don't need a resolution on this. We just need board approval or vote. Do we need a resolution?
I think you need a really brief resolution that, that is listing for the public whatever it is we've decided. That in this initial transition, we've decided to keep these two standing committees for, for whatever. And with this one other standing committee because of the community interest and concern and because it's such an important primary goal for the superintendent is witnessed by the health and safety thing, that they're going to at least last that through the rest of the year. And, and we're all going to be, every committee needs to be reviewing their work plan as it pertains to the strategic plan goals being, because those need to be removed. They're not any longer goals, but they're still in the work plan. So every committee, whether it's standing and staying or not, needs to review and pull some of those things from the strategic plan. And I just think you list those six things or whatever we decided, so the community knows. And then it makes sense with this new school year starting and with a new administration and we'll be, that's it. I mean, it's a simple thing, but they do need to be informed.
Right, and when I'm looking at dates, September 2nd is the student achievement committee meeting. You're saying you would not have one then. Cow is September the 7th.
Boom.
Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Give it a little bit more, but that's just.
Nobody cares that much about, about our committee processes.
I think we'll hear if they do, if they don't.
Yeah, well, there you go.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you know, hey, look, you know.
I didn't hear that.
Better, better than a compliment. Sorry. Let's compliment.
Okay. I'm not sure what we just said, but Phyllis, you got that. You, we'll get it. Oh, this is being recorded? Okay, so. There are a couple of things. There are a couple of other things that I think we said we wanted to give some attention to. One is clarifying, clarifying processes. We have to clarify timelines in terms of how we communicate this. We have to clarify board work versus administration work. The whole thing about actions versus recommendations, I'm just putting stuff down that we, you know.
I wouldn't add the board, the clarifying board versus administration work as part of this resolution.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. Let me tell you, this is what I'm doing. I'm just trying to regurgitate what I'm hearing people say are concerned. I'm not saying this has to be in the resolution. That, that's done. That's sack, right? Is that sack? Am I right about that? That's for, and announcing what, what our changes are. That's what I'm hearing. But, but that's not part of.
I thought that's what you were doing. I, I was confused too. I thought you were talking about the resolution.
Oh, I knew she was. Okay, no, all right. So then we also talked about, when I say use of cow, I meant the extension of 30 minutes to that meeting.
Possibly.
Possibly to give more time to the, the presentations. We also have to address the, what we talked about, process for community engagement and outreach, if we decide to do that, and what would that look like? Lobbyists, did I miss anything?
Can we probably announce that?
Can I have clarification? Hey, Ben, I just want to, I want to get clarification. So are we saying that the liaisons for health and safety, we will no longer have them present? I just want to make sure, yes, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly.
No, no longer have vendors present.
No, the lobbyists.
No, the lobbyists, you, you all said that you didn't want the lobbyists. So are we stating that? So are we stating that after this month's health and safety meeting, moving forward until January, until December, they will no longer be presenting?
No, don't believe it.
Okay, so I want to make sure.
They report to the superintendent.
They're no longer presenting to health and safety, because they're already presenting.
I just want to make sure, thanks.
They're presenting, right? We don't need to get it in trouble.
Thank you.
That's redundant.
Did I miss anything else?
The elected officials.
Okay.
Thank you. Did we miss anything?
Carolyn, can I, can I ask a couple questions? Great, I think I'm, my questions are similar to the ones that Kareem was asking a second ago, just about timing. Though, and I think it may be that you all just said the answer to some of these questions, and I just couldn't hear it. But are we making an announcement and voting on a resolution on Monday? When it comes to the changes in committees? It's fine with me, I just wanted to get clear.
This is, the resolution will be, to my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's just about student achievement?
I thought we were adding in the health and safety as well.
Yeah, I think, I was with Mary. I had, it would, it would say, health and safety to this.
We are saying that for this calendar until December.
Right.
Okay, yes, that is true, but that's not a change, it's going to continue until the...
We'll word it, we'll fix it, because I think, I think I understand, what you're concerned about is you want to make sure people know.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. I think in general, the resolution, and I'm looking at Daniel, I don't know who's writing it, I ain't, but, but, but whoever, you know.
That's good.
I think, I think broad scope, we have to stay, as a result of this committee, the board, and I'm assuming we'll have minutes for this committee, right? Okay, so in the report...
This is board, it's not even a committee, right?
Oh, that's right, it's not a committee.
So we don't actually have to have minutes as much as, you have to have some outline of what we did that we can vote on. Do we need an outline?
We still have to have minutes for any, even board meetings, you have...
Okay.
Just like we do, just like an ad hoc. Ad hoc is, it's an ad hoc, this is almost like an ad hoc committee.
It's full board.
I think it's important that we have some minutes. And I think we can, in the body of the minutes, as we're giving the minute, the report, we talk about some changes as a result of what our discussion is. And I think in the resolution, it has to be clearly stated that SAC will be folded into the Cal meetings effective after the first meeting, after the next meeting. And then...
So you are going to have this September 2nd?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have it. So, yeah.
October.
We'll have that in October, but then, and health and safety will continue until, to finish out the board's calendar year.
And we don't have to state that we're removing the...
No, we're not going to state that. Anything like that, anything like, changes processes and stuff like that, we're not including in that. Now, what we will have to do at some point is make assignments about, like, when we talked about some of these processes, like working with vendors, to me, that's an assignment to finance. To, they're also...
Wouldn't that be just an assignment to the superintendent? I think we already have policy.
Yeah.
Do we have policy for vendor stuff, or how to work with the board, or work with the district? It's already given.
And that's why I said that, because we, we have, we have to stay in line with what our policy says we need to do. And if it needs to be reviewed as a financial process, then it needs to go finance. So I don't know, go ahead.
I think one of the, I think the how to do business with the district is here, to Dr. Moffett's point, I think we review it to make sure that it's clear as possible. But the greater, the greater question is the other side, is the vendors that come to the board members. And so if they're coming to the board members, I don't know that we, I don't know that that's a statement that we put on the website. I think that's the direction from the board members, just to hand them over to me. But understanding that and handing them over to me, that doesn't necessarily mean that they come up with a contract.
Right, right, right. But what they normally do is they'll say, "I want to do, I want my book in a school." And they'll come, this is what happens, and then they'll say, okay, they'll drop off copies of the book, and then they'll, they'll be like, "Okay, I want to do business with the district." They think that that's doing business with the district. I give them to you, if you don't respond within one to two weeks, which is whatever their timeline is. She never responded, can you, so that's usually how that happens. Or they'll make, they'll come to a hearing of the public of a committee meeting and talk. And the instructions should still be consistent, superintendent, right? There's this person, and so they're still, they're still going to do that, I anticipate that they're going to do that. But what I'm asking for is that the process be public, it be very, very clear, and that it be, you know, put out there a lot on how we do business. We do a forum on that, because we, we talked, I talked about that with the last superintendent, about doing a forum, being business with the district. But aside from that, it's not clear, and whenever there's a chink, then they come to one of us.
So, I'll work with, yeah, yes, Coach Wright, on a flow chart, an easy-to-read flow chart, because pictures are always easy to follow up, and then a web forum for people to, to...
I agree. There are also, just to add to that, and, but there are also times when they come to board members first. So part of the process is being clear how board members respond to that. And it is not to engage in lengthy conversation with them, it is to redirect them, and that needs to be part of the process.
And we've been reasonably good about developers.
Yeah.
Because that's really very much the way, no developers, uh-uh, here's, go to the superintendent, go to general counsel, go to somebody. And I think that that hard, fast rule for developers needs to be the same hard, fast rule for vendors. The vendors can come to full board meetings and make their plea, like that man did for security or whatever. And one thing Carolyn, to say too, that finance and policy will remain, because with the messaging, it'll end up like the board's getting rid of committees. That's exactly what it'll, it'll translate.
I, I, I got that, yes.
Good, 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 good.
I think it's important to be as clear, with the transparency we need to have.
Include all board members.
Which is reorganizing.
Yes.
For, for board minutes, we don't write, our staff doesn't write board minutes. So really, it falls to the, that's what I was, I shouldn't have said, "We don't need minutes," it's not, we don't do the real board minutes. Treasurer's office does, can that be, is that to be done by Monday?
They do it.
Yes. We probably don't as far as minutes, restatement, it'll just probably say, "Special public meeting." It would not have all of this detail. But what I can do is just do a, some type of summary and give it to, who does the name?
Ally, or, well, we're outsourcing it now, but send it to Ally.
And I can send that to her, and she can put that data in the dialogue.
Okay, but, I just want to make sure that I can get the contextual piece, the language, so that I can communicate to I, or whoever, how we communicated to the public is clear. And is that in the resolution, or, or is there a separate, like, minutes? Are there minutes of this meeting?
So, a typical board meeting, the minutes are, Ms. Jones made a motion, Mr. Rosky seconded, and then it records all your votes. There's no motions here to record.
No, my, my question, if I could stop, my question is, is this considered a committee meeting? Okay, so, so we're not, we don't have any formal minutes coming from this?
I think it's like, you say minutes versus, legally, minutes is what we, for community meetings, you still have to do the minutes. Like, for board meetings, you still say, "We have to do the minutes." But it's a different format, it's not as like detailed, like you would not get the regular format and minutes for this meeting because it's special public. But if it wasn't a special public, and it was just a board meeting, it'd just be the regular meeting minutes, like you got today, or Monday. It would be those type of minutes. But if you leave the formal minutes, there's nothing wrong with, "I can do that." Or if you just want me to take something out of minutes, and out and put it in the special public minutes, instead of just a date, if that's clear. Don't know what you want me to do.
Do we have to have this by Monday?
That's, that's, that's my line of thinking, do we have to have it by Monday?
Resolution.
I, see, I think the resolution would, that's where I am, because we can always have discussions.
Yeah, we don't wait that long.
Yeah.
We have to, and the resolution...
Let's just do a resolution about the change.
And take time with the minutes.
And then just, when we, when we vote, put the vote on the floor, in discussion, if people want to comment, they can, da-da-da-da-da. But I think it's important that we have the, the language in a resolution.
But I'd like to hear from Dan, is this, do we legally mean minutes?
We need minutes for any open meeting, you always have to have minutes.
Whether it's a committee or not.
Doesn't matter.
So we, and we will have minutes.
Correct.
We will not have committee minutes, in the same way that we have committee minutes in all the rest of it.
We have board minutes.
Board minutes.
I think it's, I, I agree with Phyllis, it's just semantics at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But just, the minutes don't have to precede the resolution, because we didn't vote on this, we just arrived at this.
I'll share a draft of a resolution with you right away.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, is there anything else that we need to do?
Let's go home.
Anything else? Ben?
No, thank you very much Carolyn for facilitating, and we're looking forward to seeing everybody on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.